Nine items. That's just for recording. I want to let everybody know that we are recording this, both audio and video. We have Merle call.
This might make you a little louder.
Oh. Is that any better?
No.
Hello.
Tim Palmer.
Here.
Terry Senical.
Here.
Debbie Blake.
Here.
James Sherman.
Here.
Elena Tamers excused. Sarah K. Here.
So we have five. So we have a quorum. I'm going to ask that if any of the planning staff or the board have conflicts of interest, that they declare them at the time that we begin with a project. All right, our first agenda item, and it's actually three items, two subdivisions, and then a site plan. So I'm going to read all three of them. The first one is Riley Ford subdivision. It's a request for a two-lot split-merge subdivision of a 12.82 acre lot, resulting in Lot 1 being a 10.87 acre lot, and Lot 2 being 1.9 acres, 1.95 acres. No new buildable lots will be created. It's located on Route 9 with public water and public sewer, zoned SC, tax map parcel 194.1-17. The owner applicant is Riley Ford, and the engineer is RMS. We're here for a sketch plan review on this one. Item number two is NPB Property subdivision. It's a request for a two-lot split-merge subdivision of a 20.15 acre lot, resulting in Lot 3 being a 4.90 acre lot, and Lot 4 being a 15.25 acre lot. No new buildable lots will be created. It's located on Route 9 with public water and private sewer, zoned SC, tax map parcel 194.1-16.1. Owner applicant, NPB Properties LLC. RMS is the engineer. We're here once again for a sketch plan review. Item number three is the Riley Ford site plan for 2025. It's a request to construct a 164,887 square foot gravel storage yard to accommodate truck chassis with related site improvements. It's located on Route 9 with public water and public sewer, zoned SC, tax map parcel number 194.1-16.1 and 18. Owner applicant is Riley Ford, and RMS is, once again, the engineer. So those three are all together. We're going to consider them at the same time. So, please, Jess.
All right, so here are the three parcels you're talking about. What used to be Bailey Ford now is Riley Ford, and the former Mark Country Shopping Center. That is the zoning, service center, and merger. These are the proposed subdivisions. So a portion of this odd-shaped lot would be traded for this portion of the Edelman lot as kind of a land swap to make the site plan work. This is the portion that would be merged with the Ford dealership. This would be the resulting lots, and as you can see, the gray area here with the parking is the proposed site plan exchange in Ford dealership. In terms of comments, really, the primary comments we had were the standard comments for subdivisions, usual planning board notes, make sure that they get merged, filed with the county, and then the site plan comments were also pretty standard landscaping, stormwater, which the property or the project is aware of. Very similar to the parking lot requests we had for the Microbird project a couple months ago. And then, obviously, the site plan is contingent upon filing of the subdivision, but that's all we have for comments of these three projects. And we are considering the seeker for the site plan and this subdivision as one seeker, because this subdivision is not contingent upon the site plan.
Right, but we're not going to consider the seeker tonight because we have-
Correct, this is just sketch plan.
Okay, Mr. Obvious.
I think Jess sums up very well. Really swapping some land and kind of squares up the lots, things up a little bit. And Riley Ford, really, the lot in the back, similar to what you see tapping across the street, handles point of entry for truck chassis. So if you go by Champlain, by Goss, or actually Riley Ford in the shade Z right now, you see a parking lot full of truck chassis. So this is not for Ford vehicles for sale to customers. It's really just clearing through point of entry inspection. So it's a gravel lot for the employees and the trucks only, so.
Seems like a lot of truck chassis. Any questions? Comments from the board? Okay, so I guess we take them one at a time. There's no public hearing required for sketch plan. There's no seeker. So for the item number one, the Riley Ford subdivision, I'm looking for a motion to accept Resolution 25-58. So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Terry Senical.
Yep.
Debbie Blake.
Yes.
James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.?
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes. And for item number two, the NPB Properties subdivision. Once again, no public hearing is required. I'm looking for a motion to accept Resolution 25-60 for the Riley Ford site plan.
So moved.
Second, thank you.
Wait a minute, that was 59 for-
That was 59.
NPB Properties.
Okay.
Motion?
Okay, I jumped ahead.
Motion, Debbie?
Yes.
Yes, and it's 25-59.
And you second?
Yeah.
Terry Senical.
Yes.
Debbie Blake.
Yes.
James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.?
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes. So now for the Riley Ford site plan itself. For sketch plan. And I'm looking for a motion to accept Resolution 25-60. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Terry Senical.
Yes.
Debbie Blake, yes. James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.?
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you going to, are you sticking around, Mr. Obvious, or?
The last item.
Are you, what are you requesting, Mr. Obvious?
I think the last item agenda is such a quick procedural thing.
Yes.
If we could close out, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, absolutely. Can be done. Item number four is the St. Olga Church Site Plan and Special Use permit.
I think Mr. Obvious was asking for a motion to amend the agenda to move the last item up to make it number three X.
Okay.
Number four.
So moved, yes. Second. I appreciate that.
Happy to.
So. Are we doing-
We'll have them, we'll have the staff present the project. So we're just going to take the last item agenda. We'll go up to right now. In the interest of time, because this is simply a procedural item, UMS Properties Distribution Center and Site Plan, before the board has been the environmental review for that project, an environmental impact statement prepared by the applicant. It has been reviewed by staff, and there has been a public hearing on that. There were several items posted at the public hearing that was required to be responded to by the applicant. They have prepared a response, but we're still short several responses from involved agencies, most particularly the Department of Transportation, that we've been in contact waiting to hear their responses to the traffic impact study. We have not had those responses yet, so we've reached out to the applicant, requested an extension of time for the environmental review. So no action is proposed for this evening other than passing a draft resolution to extend the review period until next month's meeting, which is November 18th.
Okay. Now, do we need to read you the, the-
Your motion? It would just be accepting a motion to-
Just accepting the motion. Do we have a sec, a fir-, someone wants to make the motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Terry Senical.
Yes.
Debbie Blake, yes. James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.?
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, yes, enjoy your evening. All right, back to item number four. Help me out if I get off track there. This is for the St. Olga Church Site Plan and Special Use permit. It's a request to convert an existing funeral home into a church with no alterations of building or site. Located on Park Row with public water and private sewer, zoned R2, tax map parcel number 204.3-3-8.1. Owner, RFS Holding LLC. The applicant is OCA Diocese of New York in New Jersey. The surveyor is Dean Lajway, and we were here for a secret determination and detailed preliminary plan review. However, we do not have everything that we need, so I'm looking, shall I substitute the number, or come up with a new number?
What do you mean?
Well, we're going to table.
Yes, this is table resolution.
Okay. All righty.
2561?
2561. Do I hear a motion to accept Resolution 25-61? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Terry Senical.
Yes.
Debbie Blake.
Yes.
James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.?
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes. All right. Item number five. This is the GSA Plasberg Site Plan. It's a request to use a former warehouse for an office and temporary short-term holding slash detention facility with a 1,120 square foot one-story addition, a 616 square foot exterior Sallyport structure and related site improvements. Located on Idaho Avenue with public water and public sewer, zoned Airport 2, tax map parcel number 233.5-67. Owner is WSSA Plasberg LLC. The applicant is the General Services Administration. Engineer is Engineering Ventures, and we're here for a secret determination and sketch detailed preliminary plan review. And I'm going to ask the staff. Yes, we would appreciate it if people could shut off their phones. Be greatly appreciated. And sir, would you care to identify yourself?
I'm Peter Gibbs from Engineering Ventures. We're the civil and structural engineer on this project.
Are you accustomed to this kind of public? Okay, folks.
Do you want me to introduce?
Hang on, we're gonna-
Yeah. We're all here for the same reason, so I'll just belt out and say, again, I talked to a lot of you folks earlier. Thanks for coming. You obviously have a lot about, care for your community, which means a lot to us. It means a lot to this volunteer board to see that you're all here and that you're passionate about your community. And you're welcome here, and we're very glad to hear what everyone has to say. But in order to get through this together, and in the best interest of everybody's time and effectiveness, we need to follow procedure. Please be quiet while others are talking. I'm trying my best. Hold it, hold it.
Do you want to move the podium over here so we can project it this way?
Okay, we can.
We'll try.
We'll get to him in a moment. I'm just trying to lay out some procedure, please. Just a moment. He'll speak in a moment. Let me just introduce how this will go, so you guys have a sense of how it's going to work. I am going to give a brief presentation, and you'll be able to look at the screens on each side. You'll see some images about where the site is, some basic information. The applicant representative will also speak. The board has an opportunity to engage. We ask questions, you listen, and then when it finally moves to the public hearing portion, you will be invited individually to come up and speak. The chairman will introduce some time limits on that to keep things moving. When we get to that point, I'd also recommend if you are in this room and you do speak, if you can exit afterwards so that others could come in, that would be fair to allow more people to be in the room. We're obviously at capacity. And again, volunteer board, community, working through this thing together, that is our job to review. We're in this together. Let's do this together respectfully, kindly, and, all right, we'll kick it off. I know you may not be able to hear me very well. I'm really going to try my best. But the quieter we are, the better.
Thank you, Trevor. Would you like me to repeat?
We'll introduce you, and then you can, you can, we'll bring you in.
Okay.
Yes, I'll try this. I'll just yell. So we're going to work through some images about the project location and the site. Out here, this is the old former airbase. You can see northeast printing, and the site we're going to be talking about is on Idaho Avenue, an existing 10,000-square-foot warehouse building. The site is already there. It's in the A2, Airport 2 district, public building use, which this falls under. By definition, is an allowed use in that district. Here's our zoning map. I know that it seems far away. I'll see if I can move my mouse to show you where we're at. This red dot in the A2 is where the project is located. See my mouse moving right below the A2. I'm just showing our zoning ordinance item. This is directly from Table A. Public building or use is allowed in the A2 district, subject to site plan review. This process unfolding before you with the planning board is called site plan review, where they receive the application and determine whether or not it meets the provisions in the town zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Staff who work for the planning board help go through the ordinance and criteria to help them determine that. That's what our role is. So onsite, you'll see this is from the Clinton County website that determines proximity for 239M referral to the county planning board. This did not meet that criteria. This is directly from the county's website. It's outside of that area. So this was not referred to the Clinton County Planning Board for referral. And here's some pictures of the existing site. If you go out there today, this is what you'd see. It was recently for sale. It was previously used for warehousing, shipping. Pretty basic straightforward 10,000. It's about the size of it. It's about the size of a Dollar General. Those are about 9,600 square feet. So by comparison, if you've been to a Dollar General, that's the size of this building. And the actual layout of the site as proposed, two modifications to the existing building. About an 1,100-square-foot addition off the back, shown here, if you can see my mouse. This would be a block structure, and then slightly to the south would be about a 618-square-foot Sallyport, basically a drive-through garage. This is just the lighting lumens map. They have to submit everything from stormwater plans, parking analysis, lighting, to show how far the light spills off the site. Each one of those items has complied with town zoning. We're aware people are very interested about the floor plan and the layout. You can look at each side. This is that same structure, just from a plan view. So all those folks watching, I'm going to switch from this view looking straight down at the building to the floor plan, which roughly aligns with that, slightly turned. The predominance of this building, the 10,000 square feet that exists currently, is shown to be primarily offices on here, locker rooms, evidence storage, break rooms, general office. The site in the darker imagery, the 1,100-square-foot addition, does include detainment and entry rooms. I'll let the applicant's engineer speak more about that. And this is the zoomed-in version of that. Again, off to the right would be the new pull-under garage, and this is the new block addition off the back. It's hard to see with this copy, but there, the one detainment area is here. This is an entry off of this, general work area, storage. And again, we can dig more into those uses. This is the outside of the site, but you've seen actual images of the site. And I'll go back to an overall image and hand it over to the applicant's representative. And maybe we'll, it's traditional that he would address you. I don't know if you want to have him address the public for ease. That would be atypical, because really, the conversation is between you folks to understand first, and then maybe we can address other questions during the public comment period.
I do feel a little bit like the podium is in the way.
Yeah.
Can we put it back where it traditionally is?
Over here?
Where is that?
I'll put it, put it here so they can still see the screen.
Okay. And while they're doing that, are you folks from the press?
Yes.
May I ask where you're from?
Channel 3.
Channel 5.
Channel 5. Lord, we wish you guys had been there for the no kings thing. All right, Mr. Gibbs.
Okay. Again, to introduce myself, I'm Peter Gibbs from Engineering Ventures. We're the structural and civil engineer on this project.
Okay.
I think Trevor did a great job explaining what the, what the project is. A couple of little things. There are two small additions at the entrances to vestibles. It is a 10,000-square-foot building. We're putting an addition on. It's warehouse now. We're going to change it to use of public buildings slash use, 284 Idaho Avenue. The site is 1.67 acres right now. The proposed, that you see, the additions and the changes to the site plan, the parking, the stormwater management, the sewer, the water, it all equates to less than an acre of disturbance. All right, and that's, it makes a difference because it dictates what our stormwater management would be, or the process of our stormwater management.
Who is speaking?
This is Peter Gibbs from Engineering Ventures. I'm the structural and civil engineer for the project.
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
I don't think it works. Say it again?
It's not meant to make noise out in the hallway.
Okay.
It's for this room.
Okay.
It's not working.
Will you encourage everyone to remain quiet so that everyone can hear, Mr. Gibbs?
Couple of other things. We're not changing the height of the building. When you look at the additions on the architectural plans, sloping roofs, it continues that slope. We're meeting the required parking requirements. Again, stormwater management, we're meeting the requirements of stormwater management. We got a review letter, I think it was last Friday, from a Virge Engineers with comments about this stormwater management and other comments. We will be addressing those for the planning staff and the board. Sewer hookup, we're planning a new sewer line coming out of this, and a new water line. Presently, the warehouse is not sprinkled. It will be sprinkled under the new occupancy. That's about all I have as a presentation. Do you have other questions? I'd be glad to answer any.
For numbers?
What I can.
Questions, comments?
Could you talk a little bit more about the use of this facility?
Yeah, it is, the owner is WSSA, and it's going to be leased to GSA, Government Service Administration. It is public building in use, and obviously, it is some form of law, of course, because there's a Sallyport and there are detention rooms in there. Okay, Sallyport is a garage, but there's a gate that goes up. You drive in, the gate closes, occupants get out, they go into the building, and then the vehicle exits by having another gate open, and the vehicle drives out. It is, you know, it's an allowable use with site plan review in this, in this zone for public use building, and it says things like federal government, police, sheriff, substations, jail, rescue fire station. So that's what it's going, it's going to be. It's law enforcement. If that answers your question.
Somewhat. Could you talk about why we need another building like this in this community?
Oh, I-
Can't, okay. I know you're the engineer, so I don't care, so I don't-
Why we have it. It's brought to us, we're under contract with the owner, and the leasing has requirements, and we try to meet those requirements.
Other questions, comments? I have a few. You know, somewhere occupancy max of two. Am I correct about that?
Was that in the application? I don't-
It came up somewhere.
Okay, I don't remember that.
Trevor, does that ring a bell for you?
It doesn't, but I have the application right here.
Okay. As Trevor said, the majority of it of the existing building is mostly offices. There is evidence, lockers, things like that.
Right.
And then the addition is more of the interview rooms and stuff like that. But I, I think it's more than two.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the application reflects proposed new employees of 46.
Right.
It doesn't talk about, are you talking about the detainment area?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I picked up an occupancy of two.
It doesn't specifically say that in the application.
All righty.
So we don't know how many people could potentially be detained in this area? Is there a max?
I don't know that, no.
The application, I think, says one bed and one toilet in the holding area. So, you know, that's evidence that it's intended for one, but I don't think we know actually how many might be in there. Are you able to account for those 46 employees? Is that all what, what they will be doing? Meeting off immigrant?
No, other than law enforcement.
Right, okay, but yeah, that's what I expect the USC engineer to say.
It is, it is a law enforcement building. It's a secure building.
The environmental assessment form indicates land uses as urban, commercial, and other. Are you able to specify what the other uses might be?
No, other than-
Law enforcement. Will there be 24-hour security cameras producing audio and video of the interior of the facility, especially where detainees are parked and fined, questioned, or otherwise treated?
I, I do not have the mechanical electrical plans in front of me. However, I assume that there will be because they have detention and maybe overnight detention, so.
Yeah, someone has to be there.
Yeah.
And it has to be secure.
Yes. All right. A public hearing is required.
Tim?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Gibbs, is there anybody from GSA in attendance to answer those questions?
Not that I know of.
No. Is there? Is there anybody from GSA in attendance who could answer those questions? Is there anybody from GSA in attendance who could answer those questions?
Or can you get them on the phone?
Doesn't appear that anybody from GSA is here to answer those questions.
And it's clearly not, in your purview, to be responsible for answering those questions. So a public hearing is required here, and we obviously have many people who are interested in the public hearing. I am going to ask that everyone limit themselves to two to three minutes for their remarks. You may identify yourself or not. We encourage you to identify yourself, but you're not obligated to do that. Michelle, are you able to help me with timekeeping?
Sure.
Okay. So.
Could I ask that Trevor, one, read- Could I ask that Trevor, one, read what, from the zoning ordinance, what a public building uses?
Okay, so, board member has asked for the definition of a public building, which is?
From our zoning ordinance.
From the zoning ordinance.
Yes, so, this is directly from our zoning ordinance, and this is a description of the public building or use that, as proposed. Public building slash use. A building used for public purposes by any department or branch of town, county, state, or federal government, including libraries, museums, post offices, police, and sheriff substations, jail, and rescue or fire stations.
So notably jail is included as a use for the A2 zone.
And could he also tell us what our job is?
So, board number is asking, could you please describe what our job is at the board?
Okay, that's reasonable. Gotta know your role, right? And I, I got into this a little bit before, but I just want to remind everybody, the town of Plattsburgh, over many years, appoints individual members to the town planning board for seven-year terms on a rotating basis. We've had lots of folks that are unpaid volunteer, volunteer folks that we attempt to bring in from all corners of town, so that we have representation. But just to remind everybody, volunteer board representing multiple areas of town. We actually don't have our full board tonight. It's a seven-person board, someone recently resigned, and we're down one person tonight. But the role of a planning board under general municipal law is to act on behalf of the public to review projects in order, and these projects are determined by the town zoning ordinance, whether they need building permits, site plan review, special permit review, or other under local laws. This particular application falls under the requirement for site plan review by the planning board, and they're obligated to implement no more or no less than what's found in the town zoning ordinance. And they utilize professional staff to assist them with that. We sit with that document every day and, and, you know, work through town projects of various sizes and scales, this being one of hundreds per year. So, staff has prepared a basic summary of this project, where it does, or, in this case, it really doesn't have any issues where it doesn't meet the aspects of the ordinance. But the town board does have flexibility to vary certain aspects of projects, but it can't go beyond the scope of the ordinance. And there are aspects of the ordinance that allow them, when there's instances of shall, and it often has to do with requirements of how things look and appear and sit, but not uses. Those are required to be varied through the zoning board of appeals. This board, if it chose not to approve something, or to approve something that's not allowed, would require a variance. So in this instance, they're reviewing an allowed use in a zone where it's, where it's proposed isn't allowed use. So their job is to look at the aspects of this use and determine whether or not they meet the zoning ordinance.
And following up on that, as you can all see, this is a marvelous, exciting way to volunteer for your community. So, any of you who live in the town of Plattsburgh, I encourage you to fill out a volunteer form and enter into the town. There are various volunteer roles that you can play, including this one. As you know, we just lost a member, and we need two alternates.
Can I do a plug too, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
In 2026, we're gonna be working on the town's new comprehensive plan, which eventually gets to set zoning after that. So if we have a lot of volunteers here who want to be in committees, this is, you know, be involved, and you get to be involved when regulations are created rather than later.
Yes.
And you'd be welcome to participate.
Yes. I have a question, is there any leadership to this group? Is it organized in any way to help, you know, with the pattern? Who's gonna come up and ask which questions? You're just all here on your own, pretty much. We're intentionally disorganized.
Because it's our role to capture public comment, and, you know, we have, we'll have a lot of work to do after this meeting to catalog the public comment. If you could come up or stand up, you'll have the same obligation as me to talk very loudly so they can hear. And one more procedural aspect about public hearings. The hearing part is the most essential part. It's to collect comment, not necessarily require each individual planning board to give you an answer directly back. That's the hearing part. Please be respectful of their time to listen to you, but that is their, their job to listen to what you have to say and consider it as part of this review. So please stand up, talk as loud as you can, and we're gonna do our best to capture these comments. You are also recorded, so we'll do our best to capture that after. And, form a line down the middle, that's actually a great suggestion, if folks want to line up down the middle.
There we go.
This does have a little bit of a glory to catch.
I believe that the, I think the third person in line, the woman with the light green sweater, I think you stood up first. I'll get you forward.
I just wanted to say thank you to this gentleman for explaining about the building. Obviously, none of us could give a hoot about the building. We want to know what's going on in the building, and this is not answering our questions. So I do have a couple of questions that he might be able to answer. Our infrastructure at the airbase is in question now, we're having trouble with it. So with your, not you, I'm sorry, you're such a nice man. Building, the building is refurbishing it, whatever, you're putting all new pipes in and everything, you're coming out into our old pipes. Are we gonna be able to sustain that? Is it gonna mess up everybody in the neighborhood because we don't have enough infrastructure to accommodate what they're doing? And you did say the height will not increase, and yet you're building on a second story, that kind of confused me. And will you be hiring local people to do all this construction? Where are all these people going to live, the forty-five new people? Just unanswered questions, where nothing has been answered here tonight.
Mr. Gibbs, I can give you maybe a little bit of a hand on that. You've all heard Trevor say that we have ordinances that we're following, and amongst the ordinances that you have considered in the planning department are things like sewer, water, lighting. So the, I believe the assumption is that those are available.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give our attorney heartburn, and I'm gonna do the thing we should never do, which is answer a few things really quick. It's not gonna be two stories. I, I know people can hear things wrong, it wasn't two stories. And for sewer, the town recently relined all of its sewer out there, so that's really, the sewer's not a concern, it's stormwater, and they're controlling all their stormwater on site. That's just something I happen to know, so we can put that one aside.
Okay, and that's all the help you're gonna get from me.
What were the other parts of the question?
Sewer. Were they gonna be locally higher?
I, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question.
Okay, was there, was there a third part to your question? No.
Where are the forty-six people gonna live?
Right, oh, where are they gonna live? I don't think we know that. It's not part of what we're considering at this point. All right, please, and like I said before, please feel free to identify yourself, we encourage you to do that.
Can I turn this way?
Sure. Kind of comfortable.
Forty-five degree angle, whatever.
My name's Kurt Allen LePrairie. I'm a resident of Plattsburgh. I was born in New York State seventy-five years ago. I'll have a lot of questions, but I got a few answers if you don't mind. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. I didn't work forty years to retire, I worked fifty-six, paid with the government. My concern about this is more about humanity, and what's going on in our country, and I think I've earned the right to say what I believe is not right in our country. All you people out here today are patriots for being here, make no mistake. What I've seen in the Donald Trump administration, and the services of ICE, secret pleased, fascist really, they're sexist, they're homophobic, they're racist, they're anti-American. And I don't think we need them in Plattsburgh, New York, because we have a beautiful place I'll have two more things to say. Fuck Donald Trump and fuck ICE.
Hi, I'm Kevin Patnott, I don't think you have any problem hearing my voice. I used to run the courtroom downstairs for a long time. I only have two questions, okay, for the engineer. Who is WSSA Plattsburgh LLC? And who is their chief executive officer or operating officer?
Gabriel Farah.
Gabriel Farah.
Yes, F-A-R-A-H.
And what is WSSA?
Ooh, that's a good one.
Yeah, I'm kinda.
I do not know.
Flint, Michigan.
They're a real estate company.
Yeah.
West Second Street Associates.
They have a local LLC, but that's where they're from, Kevin.
Thank you. It's all I've got. Nobody loves the town of Plattsburgh more than I do, and I'm very disturbed with this. I really, I really get it.
Hi there, my name's Cindy Snell, living in the city of Plattsburgh, but really close to the playline in this project. So what I wanted to talk to you guys about today is a part of the SEACER. So everybody knows there is this environmental control review document, and I asked Trevor earlier today, part two would be filled out on this project, and he responded yes. So that's what I am going to focus my comments on. So when people hear the word SEACER, they think about wastewater and lumen's and this and that and everything else, and that is all addressed in part one of the SEACER. But the part two of the SEACER has areas sixteen through eighteen, you're welcome to look this up. I am not an expert in any way, but I've been involved in a few projects that many of you might know about that were denied by the Court of Appeals because of some SEACER violations in the city of Plattsburgh. Many of you know what I'm talking about. So I wanted to talk about the social constructs of the SEACER, which is number sixteen, excuse me, I need to put the glasses on, I'm getting a little, impact on human health, number seventeen, consistency with community plans, and number eighteen, consistency with community character. So what I handed out to these folks, and I'm sure the planning board will get a copy, is I was able to get a proximity map of the buffer distance from this building to fifteen-hundred feet, which is section sixteen A of the SEACER. Why is that important? And I'm gonna tell you why. Because it also leads to number seventeen, which is, which is the, sorry, seventeen, which is consistency with community plans. So within five hundred feet, okay, picture a football field with the end zones, that's all we're talking about, ARC, Community Development Center, which handles day treatment programs for development-related disabled folks. Within a thousand feet, we have the YMCA, we have the Christian and Missionary Alliance. Also within a thousand feet, we have several residential homes, two football fields, okay? This is the GIS map, it is the geographical map, can't be denied. Within fifteen hundred feet, we have a lot more, we have apartments, single-family homes, we have behavioral health centers north, and our new crisis center, and our new warming center, right there, within fifteen hundred feet, three football fields, okay? These are people in crisis in our community, these are our homeless people. Do we need this character next to them in their moments of healing? Right, what are we thinking, guys? What are we thinking? We also have a little outside the fifteen-hundred zone, but we have Bright Beginnings, preschool, and we have Seton Catholic. So I have handed this out, and I am really, really upset about this whole thing, especially And I appreciate the site map, I really do, I'm feeling a lot better that it's not this big detention center with rooms for sixty people. But what's in the back of my mind right now, everybody? Is this sketch looks like an intake center for another facility in our community. And I think that's what hit me the minute I looked at it. So many of you know that our Clinton County Jail is a detention facility, okay? So what if that's our, their secondary site? Or what if the annex is the secondary site? Or what if Ryan Mountain is the secondary site? Okay, I want them to think about one more thing, and as most of you know, I've been in healthcare most of my life, I'm compliance and integrity person, so I think about demographics a lot. So one of the things I've thought about, and what I looked up, is this really interesting document, which is, what are the things that are required at a detention center? So there's a document put out, the ICE detention standards, that I looked up, just in case it is ICE, I'm not saying it is, it might be somebody else, but just in case. I want also the planning board to think, under eighteen of the SEACER, how is that going to impact our community health systems? We already have big waiting lines, okay? Because they have to have, within twelve hours, they have to have an assessment, okay? Twelve hours. But wait, it gets a little bit higher on the list, has to be by a New York State certified provider. They can't bring, bring in people from other state.
Excuse me, Miss Snell.
Yes.
You're a bit over time.
Okay. Just so you also know, they have to have dental care, mental health care, detoxification service, emergency services, surgical care, they need to have everything. And we are already at our limit in this community.
My name is Carolyn Tang, I live in South Plattsburgh. And my husband and I, my family's been here for over thirty years now. We settled here when my husband left the Air Force, when he retired, because we liked the rural climate of this community, and we wanted to raise our children here. I don't want to see that change. I know that there are things that you have to look at that are within the parameters of the law, but I'm a first-generation American. My father's family came here in nineteen sixteen, the year before the Russian Revolution. They immigrated here, my mother's family immigrated here. Someone gave us an opportunity, and to have an organization in our area that strikes fear into the hearts of immigrants, and the community just is not acceptable to me. I worry about people of color in our community. My boys were born in India, they're American citizens. I don't want anyone looking at them sideways and thinking that they don't belong here, because they are both contributing members of our community, and will continue to be so. And I think sometimes we have to look beyond the law and look at what is morally right. And having a facility that, I'm not even sure if it's a legal entity, I know it's not a moral one, coming to our area is very troubling. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
All right, so I have Paul. I'm going to have my back to you because I'm addressing you guys.
And we appreciate it.
No problem.
Do it more now.
I'm very loud.
Well, you go right ahead.
Also comprehensive plan? Um, so...
You want to identify yourself?
Oh, yeah. My name is Sarah. I live in the town of Plattsburgh. Also, awkward. So, yeah. First off, I wanted to say thanks to you guys for some of your questions, which shows that you care, although the housing thing should be a forefront of your mind at all time. You made a comment about it's not a concern right now. Every single day in this area should be a concern.
It's a concern every single day. Housing is a concern all the time.
Does it? Side comment, plug for housing. So there, everything I've wanted to say has changed so drastically since you came out talking and then hearing everything here. And the first thing I want to say is, to be a little kitch, not in my backyard, so I know that the NIMBY movements have worked very well for you guys in the past. And, well, not for you, but it's worked on you, for sure. Not necessarily you guys, I don't know who was there, whenever, but you... So things can, Trevor made a good point earlier to all of us outside about there are certain rules you have to follow. You can't make decisions based on X, Y, Z. You have to be standard with everything, but you're not. You have, like, you, and again, I'm not saying you guys specifically, but in general, this is not a thing that has happened in the town of Plattsburgh, in Clinton County, in general. I mean, anywhere. This is something that happens all over the place. I really was going to go into all this stuff about moral, whatever. Morality, I think, is kind of, you get it, you're going to have a lot of people say it, about, I mean, I will say on a legal sense, by allow, if it, if it is a nice facility, if it is a detainment facility like that, you guys will be, by allowing it to come here, promoting some very unconstitutional actions, violations of the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Eighth, Tenth, Fourteenth, and potentially Thirteenth Amendments. So something to keep in mind. But more importantly than all of that, I don't see how you can make a decision tonight when your engineer has no idea about all these pertinent things. If you are, like, I, I don't know how you can approve a building when you, you don't know what the use is. You, you say, like, jail facility, there's, there should be so much more information you have. And if you don't have that information, I think you're doing a real disservice to your community. I mean, I can't, that's the biggest thing here to me. And I, I would like to think that if you were to pass it tonight, that someone else could come in here, show you some images, and be like, "I don't want to tell you what I'm doing. I don't know what's happening." Even though I, again, no disrespect, but to have the engineer who has to approve every little thing, not know what's actually going in there? So like, what are, what are these walls for? What are you approving? Again, I was going to go into a whole thing about, there's, there's so many, many pieces of this where you don't need to promote the wrongdoings of the federal government. I'm sure everyone's heard of the Fusion of Slave Act. I'm sure everybody has heard of Japanese internment camps. And I'm not trying to exaggerate, but literally that was saying, "You know what, federal government, we're going to do what you say to do." And I do feel, that sounds like I'm done, but I do appreciate you guys for actually looking like you care. I don't know anything about you personally, but coming here, it could have been like, "Oh, you're all jerks who just want to see brown people incarcerated." But it seems like you actually have questions and care about what's going on. And I know you do, obviously. So...
Thank you.
That's what's real.
Does this microphone work?
Not sure.
Not sure.
We do appreciate you addressing us.
Can you hear me okay?
No.
All right, everybody hear me? Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Hartford. And I have lived in the North Country for 40 years. I have chosen to transplant to this area because it is a wonderful place to live, and it's a wonderful place to raise your families. And as a view here on the, on the, on the planning board, you love Plattsburgh, and that's why you're here tonight, because you care about this community. I want to go back in the early 1990s. Many of you remember that there was a humanitarian crisis that happened right here in Plattsburgh, where we had a number of immigrant families that were trying to get across the border into Canada. There was a bottleneck because of, there was a waiting time, people couldn't get into, into Canada. They were trying, because the laws had changed here in the United States. So the community came together, and we built temporary housing in the, what is now one of the ARC buildings, to help these individuals. Do any of you remember that? Anybody around during that time?
Yes.
Okay? So that's how we came together as a community at that time. So now, we have this same vulnerable population that we are treating in a totally different manner. I have some photographs that I'd like to pass down to the board there. These are photographs of current temporary detention centers around the country. And I want to put a human face on what we're proposing here. And ask yourselves, we had a humanitarian crisis 35 years ago, and we handled it as a community, and we came together, and this is the community that I know. What's happening right now, and this proposal for a ICE detention center here in Plattsburgh, is not the Plattsburgh that I know. In closing, I just want to say one thing, that whatever, I know you're talking about nuts and bolts of a building, but there's a human aspect to this. And the decisions that you make will be your legacy, will be the legacy of this community. And I ask you to think deeply on what it means for you to make this decision in the direction that you want to go. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Bylow, right down the road from Baker Road. I'm here today to ask two questions to the board, mostly, A, about our relationship with Canada and how this could affect it, seeing how many Seekers were built on a tourist community, and how, and how this building could potentially, could potentially bring down tourist levels in the community. And second, how, how we can just allow, for that, for that, for that of a school nearby, Seton Catholic, from little kids from four years old all the way to 17, 18 years old, as an alumni, how we can allow this to be so close to a building like that, which houses kids of all those ages?
My name is Kristen Sommerfeld. I live in the town of Plattsburgh. First, I want to say thank you to the board here. You have taken on a lot today in your volunteer roles, and I want to make sure that I recognize that this is a we-not, us-them situation. First of all, I do want to just reiterate the same things I want to say, Ms. Snow, Ms. Payne, and as a Seton mom of children who are adopted and of color, as well as people who house the international students at Seton Catholic, I have a concern about the proximity of this. However, even if it was a different building in a different place, it isn't really about my concerns, it's about my family. But I will, would like to comment that I am a recent transplant to Plattsburgh from Denver. And one of the things that drew me to this area was the small town and the safety of it. And to think of, the thought of something being zoned as public use and then adding the word jail, which I don't actually think detention center really should be considered jail, but to have that in any sort of public area will detract from the global vision of this town, to have that safe, welcoming, aderent act experience, and that the things that you are trying to bring into the city, and the tourism, and the businesses, and the infrastructure, would be significantly detracted from with this, as well as just the overall infrastructures. One thing that was not said was our school systems are not prepared. I'm, I'm a medical provider here, and I think this is kind of a medical desert, and I'm very shocked about the resources we can provide this community. And we do not want to deplete that, especially for such an amoral podcast.
Hi, my name's Jessie. I live in the town of Plattsburgh. I first want to thank you guys for your time. I want to thank everyone here for coming inside and out. These pages are filled with people. And I hate to get emotional, guys, but...
It's an emotional issue.
There are times in our careers, and even in volunteering, that we have to step up, and we have to challenge ourselves. You have to challenge yourselves. This is not about box checking. This is not about status quo. This is not about your job as usual. This is about setting a precedence in what you are allowing to happen in this community from this point forward. It's a lot of responsibility. I know what you're used to doing, and it's probably not this intense, but it's a volunteer position, and you're given an opportunity to show your community that when it comes right down to it, that you care what's going on behind the buildings you're approving here. That you care beyond just checkboxes. And if it means you walking away from your volunteer position because you think there's going to be more people in this room and outside that disagree with you, we will be here to back every single one of you. I guarantee you. I promise each one of you. I will, I will multiply these pages by 10 to back any single one of you in the decision that you have to make that goes beyond what you're used to doing. So again, I'm asking you guys, I'm not asking you to do your job as usual. I'm asking for you to challenge yourselves, to, to expect the people that actually want to propose this to show up. And again, if there, if we are so about standards and protocols, then there is no approval tonight until the very same people that know the specifics that need to be answered, that we were promised outside, show up. That's my ask. That's your excuse to sleep on it, at least. No approval tonight. That's my ask to all of you.
I'm going to stand over here, and I've never been accused of not talking loud enough, so they should be able to hear me. My name is Mike Carpenter. I am the president of the Northeast Group that Trevor cited. We are the neighbor to the south. This building is horseshoeed in between property that I, my family, and the rest of my company own. I'm also the M in Mhab, that was also referenced tonight. We're across the road, helping people with jobs. I will not give a political speech about morality, whether this is right or wrong. Everybody has their views for it. But I will tell you this, everybody in this room should be offended that WSSA is not here. So I will take five minutes to set the record straight. WSSA is West Second Street Associates. It started by a Palestinian immigrant in the 1950s who came here. He started this company. He has government contracts all over the United States for this kind of facility and other facilities. That's what they do. He hired a gentleman, who is probably a lovely gentleman, who's from Vermont. According to his website, this gentleman's website, they've never done any work in New York State. According to his website, they've never done any work in New York State. That may not be true. They may have, but according to his website. So in Plattsburgh, New York, we have an agency that's not located anywhere near here, being represented by an agency from a different state, wanting to put a facility in your backyard. And I can go further and tell you that it's my backyard because I pay taxes on all of that property around this facility. So I have a couple of questions. First off, if you have 46 employees at this facility, Trevor, I challenge you that there's not enough parking in that lot to, to provide the 46 employees. And I know you are. And I know that because when we came and saw you do our own property, we had less people, and we probably have more parking than they have. So I think there are unanswered questions that we should be looking at based on the size of that property not being large enough to support what goes on in that facility. I also know from research that property values typically, when this kind of facility opens, go down. So my question is a very sarcastic, very simple one. Will somebody from the town or the planning board assure me that when property values go down, that my tax assessment goes down, that I can take that action? They can do whatever they want. They can put buildings, private businesses have the right to do stuff. They have the right to put this building. But I submit to you, when I opened Mhab, which was a controversial facility, I came to every damn planning board meeting there was. I came to every zoning board meeting there was. I opened my facility to the general public to come and ask me questions about what we were doing so that we could put people's mind in ease. Now, this gentleman who can't answer basic questions, and WSSA is not here, please do not approve this project based on those things.
Is that, is that a legitimate reason, do you think, to table this?
What, what specific legitimate reason?
To have WSSA?
You are...
Or someone.
You are always entitled to make a motion to table this or any project if you feel like you want more information. And if you don't have enough information to make an decision... I guarantee you, that was the first time an attorney has ever been given applause. [laughter] Look, I just, I want to remind you, if you are going to table for that reason, you need to let the applicant know what information you want for next time. We've, we've talked about that many times. So you are always entitled to table a project, to ask for or get more information, just make it clear to the applicant what that information is.
Right. And that information would need to be relevant to the nuts and bolts kinds of things that we're considering here. Is that correct? The things that are within the purview of the planning board and the planning department?
Yes, it would need to be pertinent to that, but that, like, that's pretty broad, I think.
Yes.
You have to have...
The site and, right, the site and use of a site is your purview.
Specific unanswered questions, that if they can't be answered by somebody who's here, and only answered by somebody else, that's a rational reason to table action if you have legitimate questions. Mike, buddy, you challenged me, so I just got to, oh, fair's fair. They have multiple shifts, that's why it's 46 spaces.
Thank you.
So, or 40, 46 staff, shift work, basically 24 hours, so that's, that's the part...
So they know what shift work, but they can't tell us what it is?
If they've said, if they were here, you could ask.
So, is it that they're not there?
Maybe, let's get there.
That's up to you.
Uh, the other thing, just, because it helps, so we're all on the same page, information's power. We've talked about Seeker earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I wish I didn't know as much about Seeker as I have to, but that whole talk about number 16 and 15, unfortunately, they don't apply because Seeker is two steps. First, you determine what type of action. It's an unlisted action, and it's under a certain threshold. So you don't fill out an EAF part two full form, you fill out an EAF part two short form that only has, I think, 12 answers, 16 answers. So it's under a threshold, it's not a type one, it's under five acres, it's under 100,000 square feet, so it doesn't meet the threshold to fill out a complete EAF part two full form, which would ask all those questions. So we're not even empowered to ask those questions that were discussed, just to be clear. It's a, unlisted action requires only a short form EAF. Sounds procedural and wonky, a lot of this stuff is, but that's the answer to that question.
All right. We're ready for more. Boy, that's really tough to follow, Mike. I built his greenhouse at Mhab, so, anyway, and speaking of more esoteric, I, I just learned about something called Article 78. Is that a thing? Is that a thing? And we haven't talked about it, and I don't want to bring the room down, but let's say you guys, you know, are bound by the zoning laws to okay this thing because that's how it works. And you have to pass it, or you choose to make a moral judgment and shut it down. Is it right that by Article seventy-eight, we get sued?
Yes.
And how does that manifest? What does that look like? How does that?
It goes to court.
Goes to court?
It goes to court and...
A judge decides.
A judge decides whether it happens or not. The town is not necessarily penalized, but all of the decision is... Or is the town also possibly financially penalized? Is that...
We've been down this road before. I mean, probably, I mean, I'm happy to answer, but if you want to give your...
So the basics of Article seventy-eight proceeding is an agreed party, meaning it could be the applicant, it could be members of the community. After a decision is made by the town, can file under Article seventy-eight, which basically either party is then alleging that the board acted in an arbitrary, capricious manner in making their decision and did not have a legal basis for making their decision. Many things can happen from that. A judge could look at it and send it back to the board. The judge can grant the original relief that was requested. So for example, if the applicant denies... If the project gets denied by the board or the applicant sues under Article seventy-eight, a judge could send it back and say, "Have another hearing. You messed up this part of the process." Or a judge could say, "It's so clear that this should have been approved. I'm approving it." I'm not saying that would happen. But those are the... That's the breadth of what can happen in those types of proceedings.
Or a judge could say, "You know, the board was right.
They acted appropriately. They upheld the law." Article seventy-eight is a section of law. They sue under it as a typical lawsuit. So anything can happen. It's up to the judge to hear the case. This board has been through that. The zoning board has been through it a few times.
And you would be the guy arguing that, then, if it came to that? You would be our man?
Nobody's cheering for me now.
Is that something you could, like, appeal to? Say, an ACLU or Southern Poverty Law Center or something?
Not necessarily. An appeal from Article seventy-eight goes to a higher level court in New York State and eventually potentially go to the Court of Appeals, which is the highest level state.
Could you stall something like this in a bunch of appeals? By making appeals? Could we all pile a suit?
Every single one of us?
We could.
I'm so sorry I opened that door.
Or maybe not. Maybe I'm not sorry.
And I'm not trying to be cagey and answer. There are a ton of possibilities. I'm trying not to give legal advice to the general public because that's not my job. I'm trying to procedurally answer how things could work in a general sense in a case like this. So just take those answers if that's what they are. My job is to give advice to the town and the board. That's probably it. But if those questions make sense.
We've been through it. To give you a quick, real-life example so you don't have to pretend. I mean, I've been through it a couple times. This board's got some experience being sued in Article seventy-eight. The most recent example was the community came out almost like this to tell the board that they should not approve the expansion of the quarry because it was too close to people's homes. The quarry wasn't allowed use with an approved DEC expansion plan. This board felt a lot of pressure from a room that looked like this, denied the project, was sued under Article seventy-eight by the project. The judge said, "No, the project's approved because it's allowed use in the district where it's approved. Your ordinance says so." This board lost that denial. Other denials, other Article seventy-eights that have been won by the Zoning Board of Appeals upheld their decision because they had a rationale. I'm just telling you, we've seen it go both ways, but at least one time, this board...
This is the kind of thing you're talking about, people getting involved so that we could maybe make zoning laws where we have some kind of ability to go. Moral objection.
Build your community from the bottom up, and maybe we don't get into situations like this.
All right, well, thank you for listening. I have a little more time. The United States surpassed Russia in 2001 in incarceration rates. By 2008, it reached its peak at 2.3 million people are incarcerated, one out of every a hundred adults. We're a super incarceration-happy country. And I thought I was going to come here with a lot of doom and gloom, but as most of us also know, it's not a lie that crime rates have dropped in this country in the ensuing decades. And along with that, our incarceration rates have dropped too. So from 2.3 million people in 2008 to now, I think it's 1.7 million people in the country are incarcerated. My point being, we don't need any more places in this country to incarcerate people. And I'm just going to say, you know, part of the reason we have so much incarceration is it's profitable.
Right, exactly. And that's what this is. My name's Lisa New, I'm a late-term resident of North Country. Registered Republican, right-born and bred Republican. Father was a well-known Republican politician. Had to change to independent once the Bushes got in office. Then I changed to Democrat so I could vote for Obama. And now I'm back to independent. I hate the political division in the country, the hate, the pitting against people. I know you're all volunteers, but I know you all have a political affiliation. And I'm begging you. I can tell by some behavioral smug, I'm guessing, there's political ideology in this realm. And I want you to keep it out. I want you to think about the kids, the neighbors. Do we need a jail in the town, right in the heart of our town? Do we want that in an area we're trying to redevelop and grow? Also, this kind of thing, the Article seventy-eight, that's a lose-lose situation. You get sued by them, you get sued by us. You lose tax money because things go down. The town cannot win in a situation where you allow an outside, money-grabbing developer to come in. Because if the detention center goes, and then in three years, the elections turn, it's shut down, then what? Your property values are already plummeting. Our character, our integrity as a town, our integrity as North Country citizens, which we hold so high, our quality of life, which we hold so dear, is thrown away because we don't have a good zoning law, is what I'm hearing. I've heard before that you need to get involved, and I backed away from politics because it's so damn ugly. But what was the date the application was received by the town of Plattsburgh? I'm just wondering about that.
August twenty-seventh, 2020.
August twenty-seventh. And we found out about it in a buried classified ad. That's policy? Totally unacceptable. And so, yes, we will be going there. We're not going away. You'll see more of me here because I'm going to take more control about what's happening in this town. Because I do not like this direction. And obviously, some people will get in, move in on a volunteer basis so they can have more control. If that's what it takes, bingo, I'm in.
I'd like to follow up your remarks a little bit. And once again, by encouraging you to get, you know, involved with the planning, the basic plan for which the zone emerges, it's very important. And you can balance other interests as a resident. Balance business interests.
Hi, my name is Tim Dufresne. I've lived in the North Country for twelve years now. What I've seen is a mix of manufacturing, tourism, and incarceration. Two of these industries are very profitable to the North Country. One is not. One takes away both of the others, especially tourism, especially with an ICE facility. If we're looking to draw our tourists, this is the way to do it. We need more manufacturing. We need more people supporting the North Country. Manufacturing can come back. Tourism can come back. Not if this happens. I just want you to think about the economic impact of the project itself, as well as the administration and what they can and probably will do, which is stip you on the money. It's notorious. Either there's unilateral extrajudicial action that comes from a higher presence of ICE agents, basically acting like police officers. Are we prepared to deal with that in the area? Are we willing to have people brutalized because they have a darker skin color? Out of nowhere. And are we willing to have the fear that creates? Drop the number of people who want to be in the area? You know, this is supposed to be the forever wild area, but it looks like it's more of a jail cell. Thank you.
My name is Ron Deragon. Thank you for being on the board. I know what it's like. I'm on several, and when there's less people here, it's easier. This is, it's just a scary fact. My line of work, I'm a realtor. I bring a lot of physicians around, especially of color and everything. They do the research of the area before they come here because they have kids. They want to know if they're going to be accepted, discriminated against, or anything. And I tell him, and I tell them all, "You'll be fine here. With this facility, we'll lose good physicians. They're not going to look here, professors, anything like that." They do look. I had someone from Albany talk about a police reform reporter from alone, and how it said, "If you're not from here, you're always considered an outsider." That's Albany. I was showing them property. It will take a huge effect. I spent most of my life looking over my shoulder, always watching out. Now, I came to Plattsburgh, welcomed, more home than where I grew up. I got married a few years ago to a Mexican. He's here legally, and I fear that this facility, I watch over his shoulder. I don't need him taken off the streets, whatever happens. He's legally, it doesn't matter just because of the color of his skin. We have a lot of friends that are colored. So what's going to happen? We don't need that in this area at all. This is supposed to be family. People treat people with respect, and they treat them just like their family. And I don't see a facility like this helping Plattsburgh at all.
My name is Brick Miller, and this, to me, comes down to just one question. Is and does Plattsburgh, New York, support fascism? Or not?
No.
Do these guys wear masks? We've been in nineteen thirty Germany. We don't need brown shirts. Get them the hell out of here.
Get them the hell out.
Hi, my name is Sarah. My statement really is simple. We live in an era of social media. We see what these ICE agents do. We see the horrific acts of violence that they commit on our streets, and they don't give a shit because they're cowards that behind, behind a mask. They hide behind their vests, and they don't care. We live in an area that's built off the backs of indigenous people. We live on native land. Our farms are farmed by immigrants every summer. We don't exist here without them. And we're going to open up the door and let them in? We're going to let ICE in? I just don't, I'm sorry. But we, we see the things that they do. They just drag people. They don't give a fuck. I'm sorry. But it's simple that we, if we open our doors to them, we open our doors to abusers. They don't care where you're from or your legal status. They see the color of your skin. They see the language, or they hear the language you speak, and they act on that and that alone. That terrifies me for my friends, my classmates, my neighbors. I'm sorry, but we don't need it. We absolutely don't need it. And if you vote yes, then their blood is on your hands too.
Hello, good evening. My name is Winnie King, and I have only been here for five and a half years. I actively chose this place to live for my retirement. I love it, and I don't ever want to leave Plattsburgh. But I am very upset about what we are seeing. Now, I'm not going to go on and on because everyone else has spoken and spoken so eloquently and covered everything I wanted to ask. But I did think of a couple questions. So I will just ask those two, and then we'll let the other people talk. So the first one is, I got thinking that this facility is very close to the airport, if that's correct. And I wonder, because it is considered a detention center, it's a jail. Of course, I know all jails, twenty-four-seven security, and lots and lots of light. So I want to know how much light is going to be there for light pollution? And is this going to affect possibly the planes departing and coming in to the airport? That's one question. And you may not have the answer, but I just wanted to throw that out there for people to think about. Another thing, question I have is, I don't know how long you all have served, and I know you serve well and you're dedicated, and thank you. But I was wondering, has there ever been a precedence for something like this? This is nonsense. Have you ever approved before? Something that gives us no answers, gives you no answers? I don't think, really, you probably have. If you think of it and you compare it to just any other request, and you compare and say, "If they didn't give me these answers, and I don't know, I'm going to tell you what for now." Or didn't you just say, "Oh, that's fine, go ahead." So there are the two, and again, thank you for the time.
All right, is this thing on? All right. Let me get my outdoor voice on. So we have a facility, which is, we don't know what federal agency will be using it. We have no idea how they're going to square the circle of forty-six people working there and can barely attend, what was it, what, two people? Something along the lines of that? You cannot give me any information whatsoever on any questions that we ask about the usage of the facility. This whole situation is about as opaque as a piece of plexiglass that has been thrown through a rock tumbler. This is utterly absurd. And all of you here, potentially wanting to rubber stamp this, is unacceptable. You should not rubber stamp this whatsoever. If we have to go through lawsuits, we'll go through lawsuits. And if we, as a community, have to go through lawsuits, we will go through lawsuits. Continuing with that. This is a corporation who has been working, who I'm going to presume is working for the federal government in forming a detention facility. As we've seen in other detention facilities, like Alligator Auschwitz, sorry, Alligator Alcatraz, the conditions of which inside are utterly reprehensible, craning people into tiny, tiny little cages with no privacy, no barriers whatsoever, and most importantly, no access to a toilet, that you have anything more than a flimsy little curtain to cover yourself. And a building, mind you, which has apparently lost something along the lines of a hundred inmates out into the middle of nowhere. So how can we assure that this building that they create is even going to be an effective building in the first place? How is it not going to potentially be filled with human rights abuses that we have not heard of yet? But we might hear of them when it is finished and when you have housed people who live in this community and around this area, who are just trying to live their life, trying to work the American dream. Please do everything in your power to not rubber stamp this. Listen to that heart inside your chest that we all have. And if it's not there, well, then we'll just find other people to put in your spots, that's all. Okay, I did my time. Okay, I did my time.
Hello, my name is Angela Rotella. How many roads must a man walk down before you call him a man? How many seas must a white dove sail before she sleeps in the sand? Yes, how many times must the cannonballs fly before they are forever banned? The answer, my friend, is blowing in the wind. The answer is blowing in the wind. I won't stand up here and yell. I won't stand up here and hate. That is not who I am. That's the force that has got in us here. That will not be the force that gets us out. I will walk with love. There will be a decision whether tonight or another time. I missed a lot of it because there's a lot of people outside. In the lobby, outside the doors, parked along the road. I'm not gonna repeat what all of the fellow citizens have already said. It won't help us. And I am forever grateful for all of your words and all of your presence. And I've stood here and I've sat in this room too many times for the quarries, for power lines, for solar farms. And maybe it doesn't belong, but I think it does. This land is sacred and it matters to me. This lake is special. It's what once created Plattsburgh. And I would love to find a way for us to come together in unity and in peace to find a resolution that could actually serve this town and city and surrounding areas. I've heard other politicians say that we care about Canada and that they're our friends. That's words. Show us the action because this will not support them, nor us. We stand here not to yell or be mad. We stand here because we actually care. And I know you're saying your hands are tied, but I think we already said we're tired of hearing that. So how do we change the system so it actually works for the people? And I know right now is not that time, but if you could find it in your hearts to at least give us some time to figure something else out, that would at least help. So I'll finish with Bob Dylan. Yes, how many times must a man look up before he can see the sky? Yes, and how many ears must one man have before he can hear people cry? Yes. And how many deaths will it take till he knows that too many people have died? The answer, my friend, is blowing in the wind. The answer is blowing in the wind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Trombley and I was born and raised in North Country. I also live within two miles of this site. I'm a public school teacher. I serve our community and serve children of all races, religions and backgrounds. I'm also a mother of three children, two of which attend a special needs pre-K within two miles of this site. My own family's personal morality and beliefs go against what I can only assume is the intended use of this facility. I do not want to raise my children in a community where a facility like this exists or is accepted. I do not want my neighbors and community members terrorized by what this facility may stand for. We as a community need more than passive information. We need to make a choice of what exists in our community and what we want to exist for ourselves, our children and each other. We must stand on the right side of history and from what most of us can glean, this facility is not representative of the right side of history. I'm asking this board to table this decision, make zero decisions on this facility this evening until representative for this facility is present and open to public questioning. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patricia Barnett. I live right down the street. Thank you for being here and for listening to us. I'm a relative newcomer to the area. I was a military child and spouse for most of my life. I've moved around a lot. I've lived in different states and countries, but this is where I am now. Plattsburgh is unique and wonderful and our surroundings are truly breathtaking. This is where I'm raising my children. This is where I want to work and practice law once I finish law school this spring. Out of anywhere else in the world, this is the place I want to call home. Because it's beautiful and peaceful and the community is kind. If you've seen the footage of ICE raids and what they are doing to people, the violence, the chaos, masked agents spraying people with tear gas, shooting them with rubber bullets, unprovoked, taking people, some of them US citizens, without due process. Is this what you want for our community? You have the decision and the opportunity to stop this. Please keep us safe. Please keep our children safe. And please don't let them into our beautiful home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristi Moser. I wanted to speak kind of on a different aspect. I've been an educator in the North Country for 21 years. Being on board, speaking with other teachers around the country, hearing what's happening in Portland and Chicago. I've never had to worry about putting my kids on a bus and my kids getting home to an empty house. I've never had to worry about, I call them my kids because they are my kids, leaving the school doors and being taken by ICE agents. I've never had to worry about hiding my students in my classroom so the ICE agents can't get them. I don't ever want to have to worry about that. We are a farming community, which many of us maybe are not remembering. Our orchards run on immigrants. Our chicken farms run on immigrants. They come here, they become wonderful members of our community. I have been lucky enough to be the teacher to many of my children. My children have been lucky enough to go to classes with many migrant children. My kids, my own kids who have grown up in the North Country, don't even understand that it's not typical or normal to have classrooms filled with the diversity that they have because we are so welcoming and we do welcome them. We do treat them with respect and love. I don't want that to change for them. I don't want that to change for my own children. And I don't want my students, my kids, to not feel comfortable coming to my building where I can take care of them. Kids in Chicago and Portland are staying home, no longer getting educated because they're so scared to come to the building where they're taken care of and loved and learning. I want that to stay for the North Country, not only for my students, but for all students in our area. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I encourage everyone not to be repetitive. So far, you've done a really good job. But you know, if you've already heard someone say what you had to say, say something else.
My name is Shannon. I really just came here as, I just wanted to find out more information about what's going on. I'm not a town resident, I'm a city resident. But I work with families in the community, specifically lower income families, immigrant families. I'm not gonna repeat what's already been said, but in case you aren't aware, if you guys don't already work with that population, families are afraid and they are scared. They're not going to their doctor's appointments. They're not, they're afraid of getting picked up when they're picking their kids up from school. They're afraid of going to the grocery store to buy food. And I really just came here to find out more information so I could share it with some of my coworkers so that if we have people coming to us and asking us questions, you know, we have better information on what's going on here. And I guess I just want to know, like, where is the transparency? I found out about this tonight through Facebook, through a Facebook post that people were sharing around, that there's gonna be an ICE facility here in this community? I've lived here for 10 years and I've always felt safe. I have never felt more unsafe than I do right now, knowing that they're gonna be building a detention center that no one is here to talk about from this, apparently from this organization, which I feel like is highly unprofessional to be voting on it when there's no one here to talk about this. How are you going to instill trust in the community when there's, there's no communication? How are you gonna make people feel safe, that they feel safe and welcome in this community? Because they're not. I don't feel safe. The people that we work with do, definitely do not feel safe. And you are really doing a disservice to this community if you give this whole entire project the okay tonight to not just the town of Plattsburgh, but the families that live in the city, the families that live all throughout Clinton County. This is not just a town of Plattsburgh issue. This is a North Country issue.
Actually, a United States issue.
Hey, I'm Al Lutz. Didn't think I'd be back in this room. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I grew up in the town of Plattsburgh. My mom, Simone Lutz, still lives here. She's lived here for 50 years. And like, I'm not gonna rehash what other people have said. You are all very smart, creative people and I know that you will find a way to do the right thing. Because like, you have this incredible opportunity right now, this moment in history to use your position of power to do the right thing. And that's what Plattsburgh is known for. Like, do you remember 20, 25 years ago when those expletives from the Westboro Baptist Church came up here? You remember that? What was it? What was it that we said?
Stop hate.
Stop hate, right? And as far as I'm concerned, like, that's still something we believe. That's something, Michelle, I know you believe. Trevor, I know you believe. I went to resonator shows. Jess, I know you believe that. I do. No one who dresses up like a Michigan for Michigan fest cannot say that they don't know what's right in their heart. So I think the town of Plattsburgh is gonna do the right thing on this and clearly you know what that is. And that's my two cents.
Hi, my name is Colleen Latinsky. I just came here out of curiosity because again, hearing this on Facebook about this detention center, I was concerned and appalled that it would even be on a table for a planning board. I was on the Clinton County Planning Board for six years. I volunteered my time and my effort and I have never, ever seen anything like this. You owe the people of the town of Plattsburgh more than what you are giving. I just cannot imagine that a planning board would sit on this from August until now and not have the public aware of what you are doing. I'm naturally ashamed to say that I'm here this evening and listening to all of this for the first time. I think you should table this and think about what you are doing and look around the room at all the people that have come here. It's really a disgrace that you haven't informed the public and I think you should be held accountable.
Hello, my name is Tonya Bonabass. We lived here for probably over 20 years now. We have three businesses. We have two kids who have graduated from Plattsburgh High School, got a great education. My parents have moved here, my sister's moved here, but very invested. I can speak to as eloquently as everybody else has on many of the issues affecting children and moral aspects of it. In terms of business, I can assure you that this will impact our businesses negatively. It's already hard to get physicians to come. It will make it harder because they won't want to live next to an ICE detention center. The Canadians who come down who private pay, which is a nice balance to, for us, it's an extra source of income in an area that's remote. And especially with the Medicare and Medicaid changes coming up, we kind of rely on that. We were slated to actually expand. We were hoping to be able to bring in more physicians, more services, create more jobs at this point, but the change is insurance that's dicey. If there is a ICE detention center next to us, it will make it really, really difficult. And I'm wondering if the impact that this will have on other businesses has been considered? Because we are, we are hardworking people, people. We work hard, we get up, we go to work every day. We try to create businesses, we try to make this a better place. And this seems like it would be working against all of the efforts that we have put forth so far.
Yes.
So I say we support businesses, we support the people here who are doing good work. Wherever they're from, we bring them in if you're willing to work hard and contribute. I think we should support those people. So I hope that you make the right decision. I think that you think about the people. I hope you think about the businesses. I hope you think about growing this area and making it even more attractive because it is a beautiful place and it has so many resources. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria and I pay my house taxes to the town of Plattsburgh. I would just like to get an answer from any one of you for the record. If ICE does come to town, what we can expect regarding how our local law enforcement, the sheriff's department, the city police, will relate to ICE agents and their activities? Will they be in a supportive and cooperative role? If ICE agents act in ways that are unconstitutional, no warrants served, no due process, acts of brutality, is our local law enforcement going to protect our citizens from them? I'm just curious to know if any one of you know the answer to that. That's all.
First, I thank you for volunteering and for sitting here in Westbury. You have to have been deaf and mute if you don't understand the morality of the issue. But I'm gonna raise a procedural point. No decision can be made by any one of you on the basic answers to what this facility is going to be used for and by whom has been answered tonight. That procedurally, that can, I understand that you have narrow strictures that you have to look at, but even within those, they cannot be answered if we don't know what this facility is going to be used for, by how many and for what. Secondly, procedurally, this cannot constitute or satisfy the requirements of a hearing because there's no one here to answer the questions that are being raised.
Hey, everyone. My name's Kim. I just have some questions. I'd like this to be tabled and I have a few questions that I'd like GSA or WSSA to answer in regard to why I would request that. How many employee vehicles? I know we had the multiple shifts, but are there any vehicles that are gonna be for use for that facility held on premises that will be taking additional parking spots? And how will that impact their space? How many, how has the developer's previous projects impacted the economic development and property value in their regions? What are their future plans for expansion, whether GSA or WSSA? And can they provide any historical information from other programs or projects to show their behavior in their community? Okay, Ben. Thank you. I know. I'm out of control, I'm out of control. So what are their plans for future expansion? How long have SSA projects been in use? Are there extensions to their contracts? How often are their contracts reused for those programs to stay in place or do they take a contract? Or do they take a contract, kind of like, then leave communities? And now we have to deal with the wake of how these, uh, impact the communities? And, uh, what is the inspection schedule, especially for GSA, for, um, whatever facility this will be? Um, are there, are they inspected for health and safety on a regular basis to ensure whomever is kept there has a quality of life that is acceptable for any individual or any community member? And will healthcare providers be, like, onsite in case anything, no matter what kind of facility this is, that they can get the health and care they need from detention? And that's all. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I can't say anything that has not already been said. Everyone has said things incredibly eloquently. My words cannot compare. But I did wanna say this. If this is indeed an ICE facility, this does need to be tabled and we cannot have it here. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. That's a quote on the Statue of Liberty. I stand before you as a Plattsburgh transplant, as someone who grew up in a city with a heavy immigrant population. Many people I grew up with, friends, uh, came from homes whose parents and grandparents could not yet speak English. I shouldn't have to defend their existence by telling you that they were educated, hardworking, or kind individuals. All of that is true. But their worth as human beings does not come from their means of contribution. Above all, they were just ordinary people like you and me. And just like you and me, they deserve the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of an immigrant or even the friend of one. Do you leave your home every day wondering if you'll see your children again? Do you go to work prepared to encounter ICE? To be detained by masked men without probable cause? Have you and your family had to learn to recite your rights, um, that you can use as your last line of defense against the government pushing totalitarian control over your own personhood based on your country of origin? Would you willingly go into a car with a masked man who refused to show you his own identification? With their privilege of anonymity and governmental support, ICE inflicts terror on the people. And I do not want my people, my community, to be afraid. We need answers about what this facility is going to be. We need details. If this is indeed an ICE facility, this decision will inflict fear on the people and will lead to a decline in tourism and the economy. We will, it, and above all, it will set a horrifying precedent. Please think about your decision and please think hard. Please do the right thing and do not build this detention center. They are not going after the worst of the worst. They are focusing, they are not focusing on violent offenders and human traffickers. They are showing up at work sites, homes, courthouses where immigrants are attempting to become legal citizens, and even outside of schools. Racial profiling is not just cause, yet that is with what is being allowed. People of color, regardless of citizenship, are being stopped, detained, separated from their families, and even some disappeared without due process. We are seeing people being deported to countries that they have no familiarity with. Due process is a human right, not an American right, a human right. A detention center will be a stain on the, on the reputation of Plattsburgh. I will not stand by and allow my town or my city become a stop for ICE. History will look down on us, on all of us, and on you. Um, should the town move forward with this plan for the detention center? I, I ask you not, nobody is illegal on stolen land.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment? How many folks are yet asleep? How many of you are waiting to speak?
I think it's just these three in line, too.
Okay.
I have four behind me.
Very good.
Hi. Um, I would like to challenge all of you to think about what it's like to leave your home, not speak a language, whether you, and go to another country. You don't know Seoul. You don't know the language. You have no idea where you're going. Whether you do it legally or illegally. This is what it must feel like, how frightening it is, how scary it is. We've all seen what's happening in the news. We see how ICE is acting, how they're rounding up these people. They're even rounding up people who are here legally. People who are citizens, who are naturalized citizens. And deporting them. Sometimes deporting them to countries they've never, they've never lived in because they're citizens. They've never, they were born here. They've never been to that other country. And they're saying, this is where you came from. There you go, go back. They go back there, they're persecuted. I challenge you to think about what that is like. Now you wanna bring that into this community? I was born and brought up in this community. This is not what we are. These are your neighbors. This is your, someone brought up and said, this is not just, this is not just the town of Plattsburgh. This is the North Country. I don't live in the town, I live in the city. But where this facility is going is not far from my house within the city. That's frightening to me. I have a young granddaughter who comes to my house sometimes to play. That's gonna be near her? That's gonna be near this? I want you to think about these things and lots of these things, what lots of these people here have had to say tonight. Because if you let this come to this community, I'm not, I would challenge you all to think about how are you gonna sleep at night knowing what's happening? And the next time you go to the mall and you watch these people come in and round up these people, or you're at Motor Vehicles, or you are up at the courthouse, wherever you might be, and you watch this happen in front of you? Think about how traumatizing that is. Because I know when I see it on the news, I am very traumatized, very traumatized. And it's not fun to watch. And I'm seeing a little smirk on your face, which is really sad to me. Really sad. I'm just cynical, I have no idea who you are. I've never seen you before, I really don't know who you are. But I've been watching the smirk on your face this whole evening.
I think this is inappropriate.
And it's really, and honestly, as a person who cares about other people, it's, it doesn't make, it doesn't make me angry, it makes me sad. It makes me sad as a person. And I challenge you to really think, and I don't know, all of you to think about how you sleep at night, and I hope you think about that when you go to sleep at night. That's all I have to say.
I'm going to defend my little word number.
That's all I'm gonna say.
By saying that, I think this is the way Carrie looks.
I'd like to apologize for those remarks.
Yeah.
You, men and women have been beautiful sitting up there. And I see smiles on the face. I do not think of it as a smirk. You are attentive and I appreciate that you're here.
Thank you.
I've been doing this for over ten years. I'm four generations in the town of Plattsburgh. And if you don't like to look at my faces, I'm sorry about that. I don't know what else to do about it. I'm not smirking, I'm not laughing. You can take it however you wanna take it, yeah, so there's nothing I can do about that.
I think it's a friendly face.
Hi. I've been in a lot of meetings where I was sitting right where you're sitting. I work in a job that requires me to talk to a lot of planning boards for greater or lesser popular projects. And, um, Sorry. And I can just tell you what other planning boards have done when I was in that position. You said at some point earlier that you might adjourn the public hearing. I think that that's a really appropriate measure that is always taken when there's not quite enough information on the part of a candidate. You can wait, you can suspend it. I had one suspended in a municipality for nine months while I provided the information that they needed to go through what needed to be done. I think this is a great thing. Maybe during that time, the town board could enter into a moratorium and look at their law again. Because they may not have foreseen that an ICE facility would wanna be here. And they may have questions like what ages of the people are gonna be in the facility? What genders? How many? For how long? These are all questions that I think need to be addressed and, and are appropriate if you're gonna be permitting a facility like that. But that's already been talked about. There are planning things that you can do, and I know because they've all been done to me. And I hope that you will do them tonight. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Jessica. I am a resident of the town of Plattsburgh. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but sorry, this is emotional. I just have to say I'm inspired by all of these people tonight that came forward and used their voices for a very concerning, uh, issue that's possibly coming to our area. I just want you all to think about the impact, um, on our healthcare in this area, our university, local university, and our community college. I work with several resident physicians and physicians that are here on work visas. They're not residents, they're not here as hardened criminals, human traffickers. They're here to make a living, to provide care for the citizens of this community. And to, for them to be targeted by ICE agents, removed without due process. And I am sorry, but illegal immigrants in this country are afford, are to be afforded due process. It says it right in the Constitution. Our government is trampling over the rights of these citizens. As we're telling this area of American citizens, it's got to stop. And to bring these agents into this area will strike fear in the heart of the people that live and work here, the children that go to school here. Many people have spoken to it, so I'm not gonna repeat it, you all have heard it. But this review board really needs to table this, thank you. We need more answers from your employer, your, I don't know if he's your employer, if I'm using the right word, but we need answers here. We need to know what's going here. What are the plans to house these people? What are the plans to get these people due process? Or are they just gonna be loaded onto a plane and shipped god knows where? What is the plan to treat these people? Our healthcare system in this community is stretched to the absolute limit. I can testify to this on a daily basis. We are struggling to stay afloat in this community. And then you're gonna add possible injury, bringing sick people into, to an ICE facility that are injured by ICE agents and need care. This, this can't happen. You really need to have more answers before you approve this, approve this facility. Thank you.
Last one. My name is Kim Hallstone. I live in the town of Plattsburgh. And I'm so heartened to be among this community tonight and to listen to all of the comments and the kindness and, and beautiful people that are here tonight. I'm not going to repeat anything that was said. I have kind of a math question for you. I'm thinking about the size of the building, ten thousand square feet? Adding on another Seventeen hundred? Seventeen hundred square feet. And they intend it to be a detention center with one holding cell? In that much space? Forty-six employees, offices? A detention center with one cell? Does one cell constitute a detention center? Something's fishy to me. It doesn't add up. Why are you going to build, spend our money? And ha, I, it, does it make sense to you? Do you need ten thou, eleven, twelve thousand square feet for one cell? Something isn't being told. Does that make sense?
Is it possible to put the, uh, the floor plan on the website so that people can see it?
Yes, it's possible. We can work towards that.
Yeah. I mean, if you could see the floor plan, you would have a greater understanding of what it is that's happening in the building.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I just address a few?
Please.
Thanks, everybody. I think the First Amendment is still alive and well in Plattsburgh. And we should all be thankful for that.
Yes.
A few items, I, you know, accuracy and how things are described, I think is really important. And there's a bunch of questions that I can't answer and that this board can't answer because they don't have to do with town of Plattsburgh regulations and policies. They have to do more what you're asking about, especially as GSA, as the owner. And, um, I think everybody hopes you can get those answers too. Just recognize who has to give them to you. I think what's been proposed, if we're being more honest about the accurate description, it's that it's a government operations facility with a detention component, not a detention facility with an office attached to it, as evidenced by the floor plan. And this is what we have to look at. So, you know, the floor plan shows a full office area layout operations facility with one cell. That's the accurate description. What's been described to us so far is it's kinda like any other, um, law enforcement office. It's, it's not a jail that's proposed. It's a law enforcement office with a detention component.
What will the forty-six employees be doing all day?
I don't know, I don't work at GSA. Like I said, I'm gonna answer town of Plattsburgh questions. And that's still up for discussion. But the other thing I wanted to address about town of Plattsburgh stuff that I, I can't answer. Um, about the public notice, I think it's really, you know, everyone's interested in that. Why didn't I know? Why didn't I know? And I just want everyone to know that, you know, almost a million square feet of developments happened in the town of Plattsburgh in the last four and a half years, noticed exactly the same way. Every building you've seen built. And so what we're required to do, if you look at the August twenty-seventh date, that was when we received an initial plan that was never acted on because it wasn't a complete application. So the town didn't accept it and bring it to a meeting. It could have been retracted the next week. It could have, the project could have died, the realtor could have decided not to sell the property. So we never post for projects that aren't before the board. That was just something that was sitting in our file that didn't get acted on. It's kinda like, you know, somebody sent you a mail, a letter that you never opened. You know, we, it wasn't a project yet. However, once the application did come to us and was complete, we have to notice for it. So our obligation under general municipal law is the same for every project that's happened in the town of Plattsburgh for the last fifty years. We send out a, a notice to all butters within five hundred feet touching that property. That happened. Um, and we post in the paper and it goes on our website. All those things happen, exactly like every project that's happened in the town of Plattsburgh for fifty years. And, and that's just a fact, it's how we do all, everything else on this agenda, noticed the same way tonight. It's just this one's really important to people. And it's important to a lot of people, so.
They're only at work.
And, and, and you're here.
Right, right.
But, but, and that's also good that you shared it with each other.
Right.
And a little bit more about the board in defense of them. I'm gonna speak for them and say, they're not upset you're here. And I wish they had a rubber stamp sometimes because they give me a headache all the time by not doing things I tell them to, sometimes. And they've been sued for not using a rubber stamp. And Mike Carpenter, have they ever rubber stamped your projects?
Not one, not one time.
Yeah. He still doesn't like them.
I wanna know what flowers are being planted at this point.
I make light of it, but it's in defense that they have no rubber stamp. And, and what, all they have, unfortunately, is Jess and I, and then this. And so the questions you ask that they're unable to answer are really boring stuff. I can tell you all day that the, you don't, and you don't care about this. The lighting complies. There's a lighting lumens planned with downward facing lighting. Do you really care about that? I don't think most people in this room care about that. We do, I have to. Uh, I, I reviewed it, the lighting lumens plan's compliant, but I don't think anybody really cares.
And somebody in this room did care.
You didn't answer, you didn't answer her either.
I wanna be honest about the conversation. Stormwater, when Peter was talking about stormwater, did anybody care? I mean, you might have.
We're not talking about that.
I know.
We just wanna know when ICE is coming here. That's what he's saying.
And that's what I'm trying to address, and so.
We don't wanna approve this unless we know what they're gonna put.
Thank you. And so what I'm saying on behalf of the town and what this board is allowed to review are the things that are in this document. Now, your questions, you have more questions. And, and maybe they do too. And that's the next phase that I just wanna, they can ask us questions, they, we can have more discussion here. But I just want you to know about everyone's roles. And sometimes I wish they had a rubber stamp, they don't. I've never seen them rubber stamp anything. But a lot of questions. What's that? What good does this bring to our area? What good does it bring to the town of Plattsburgh, to the town of Plattsburgh City? Our college, it has all kinds, kids come over, the world. What good is this gonna bring us?
But can you, can you, um, would you, the board, be able to? I, obviously, it's clear that you can table it because we need more answers. So that seems obvious and, um, but can you ever object on just, like, I understand that you're following, um, what's already written. But can you object on, like, moral grounds and just say, we throw up our hands?
I'd like to speak to that personally. The intent of our government, unfortunately, our, our federal government, is to create fear in large measure. And one of the ways that they create that fear is by acting unlawful. They just do what they wanna do. And to do what you're suggesting and what other people have suggested, for us to take our power and and do something unlawfully is not the way that we want to go forward with this thing. We want to act in a lawful way. And I think we all know what is going to happen in that facility, to the extent that, you know, and know in a sense, I mean, it's what we're all concerned about.
Right.
But we're acting in a legal framework. And I'd want to highlight what Trevor said. It's so marvelous that you're all here. You paid attention to the newspaper. Now you'll pay, pay attention to the public announcements in the newspaper more than you used to.
Probably.
And you're all active, and if somebody said they wanted this place to be the same Plattsburgh, well, here you are. You're all concerned citizens acting in the best possible way. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'm hesitant, but do you want to come to me and say something?
Shut it down lawfully.
What?
Shut it down lawfully, find a way. Find a way.
You're, you're asking us, when you do that, to some extent, you're asking us to behave like the administration is behaving. And that's not what we're doing.
You know what's right.
I know what's right.
Is this a zoning issue?
No. The zoning, it's in a perfectly appropriate place, zoning wise. There's, there's nothing wrong with it.
Mr. Chairman, does, does, does anybody from the board have questions about the project for the applicant representative? Or were, shh, please, just let, we're in it together.
Yes.
Or was there any questions raised by the public that you feel are unanswered? Or do you need additional answers? Are there more questions that we need to discuss about this?
Well, one technical question I asked and was, couldn't be answered, is whether there would be 24-hour surveillance on the places where people were held and questioned and, you know, otherwise treated in this facility.
Trevor?
Can we have Kim re-post the questions for you to write down?
We broke down most of them and they are captured, so we will have those...
We'll review the report as well.
But that brings up a good point. And so that was one question. And is there any questions raised by the community, not so much that you need to answer them, but are they significant questions that you feel need to be answered?
Trevor, I think the two things that have come...
Excuse us, excuse us, please.
Trevor, I think it goes to the two questions I posed, I asked earlier, what is this facility? Who's operating it? And I think that's a common question that we've gotten tonight, that we would ask anything. If I wasn't sure of a solar thing, and I had to ask, well, what are you doing here? That's a common question I would ask anyone. So I think in this case, we need to know, what is this facility being used for and who's using it?
Do you think that, that those questions need to be answered by the owner or the applicant? We have the applicant's agent here, I'm, I'm just asking...
Well, he couldn't answer, so, he's the engineer, so I think it has to be the people responsible, the people sponsored building that's there.
You might also want to know hours of operation, number of vehicles in and out, things we do for normal projects, number of vehicles in and out, traffic, shift changes, you know, when we look at bigger projects like Schuler, we always talk about traffic, in a way, shift changes, when it's going to happen, can the roads accommodate that? This is a small, obviously a smaller sized project than like a Schuler, but we typically ask those questions about project. I think it makes sense that you're talking about the Houston's, that entails knowing that information.
Yeah, I'm with Jim too. I feel like even if it doesn't impact ultimately the end result, I feel like the community deserves to know, you know, what we're voting on, we deserve to know what we're voting on, so I think...
One, one possible approach, you folks are not familiar with, necessarily with the process, but in most cases, a project will come before us for what's called sketch plan approval. And, you know, typically doesn't involve a, a public meeting. It's a preliminary approval, not a, not a, you know, an approval, but just saying, okay, we'll see you again, come back and we'll, you know, get more information. And I'm wondering, does that seem like a possible compromise to our lawyer?
It's, it's kind of indifferent, whether you give, whether you give a sketch plan approval or you table it, it would still be the same action at the following meeting.
Right.
So...
Can I bring some other questions? Would that be okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, the public hearing is still open. I don't know if you want to give another couple minutes without, I close it?
Yeah, we do need to put an answer, but let's, let's give it a few more minutes.
Thank you. If I, just when you're raising questions, it seems to me, her name's Martha Swan, that a fair question is, what rights and protections will people being brought there and held there will they have? And there was another one that just went in my head and out of my head, like it happens all the time in colleges. Maybe I can think of it?
Can you relate to that?
Oh, I know. It really matters if this is an ICE facility, if it's a Border Patrol, or if it's an ICE facility. Border Patrol facilities are notorious for basically disappearing people. That if you're held in a CPB facility, you have no access, your name isn't on a database, you can go, family members, friends can go days trying to search out whether a loved one, a coworker, et cetera, is there, being held in a facility. There's no disclosure.
Isn't that true of ICE as well? That's the way they operate.
I, my understanding is that ICE operates differently, that they have this database where you can look somebody up if you have a number, if you have a name. So these are questions to find out by what rights and protections will people be brought there and held there will they have.
I'm not sure that's within the purview of this board.
Well, you're, maybe not, but you were asking, were there other questions that hadn't been asked? It seems to me a basic one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, I feel like this... Okay, the, the question is...
I'm going to speak. I was just saying...
Hang on one second, please.
I don't know.
If we table it, would we keep the public hearing open?
You can continue the, it's going to be continuation of the hearing until the next week.
And we can accept public comment by email between now and then?
Right.
Comment?
Which we've already received a lot.
Please.
Hi, my name is Danielle Giordano, and I just want to say that these are extraordinary times and it calls for extraordinary measures. This is not normal. What's happening in our country, we will not accept this in our town. We will fight this to the end. And I think everyone agrees.
You know, ultimately showing up at this facility and making sure those people are getting their rights done because that's not, that's not what, what...
I think this is not the subject now.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Okay.
Sorry, it's just procedural. Generally speaking, when I've seen applications, because god knows I've foiled you guys a lot, sorry about that.
That's all right.
When a plan is, when there are still questions and you need more information, which I want to say the security, the surveillance thing, like, that's a thing that should be on a plan. Like, that's a pretty significant thing, like, in terms of architecture and whatever. It's not just like...
Right, it's hardware.
So generally, what, what I've seen when that happens is that instead of just being, like, tabled, it would have to go, whatever those answers you need are, you have to say, hey applicant, can you please complete this? And then we'll have a vote on it after you've given the completion.
That's, that would be what would be happening if we tabled.
Okay, because the way you said it made it sound like it would just, you would just talk about it next time.
It would disappear, no.
Because, because, no, not even that, but if you table it, would it be at the next meeting? Or it's not going to be until you get the information?
Well, it would be, there would be an exchange between ourselves and whoever it is that we're communicating with, with the planning committee, with the planning department, sorry.
Doesn't it have to come back at the next meeting, within 30 days?
It, it can, procedurally, if something's tabled, it can be put on the next agenda. Or if there's a specific request for very specific items, once the applicant has submitted that complete application back to the board, then it can be added to the following agenda.
Okay.
But if they require more time, they can say, we can't get to those answers by November, put us on the December meeting as long as we raise an agreement for proceedings.
This is going to be the last question.
And if, and, oh, just one more thing. And if it was still, if the public hearing remained open, it would, it could be noticed again for another public hearing, so there'd be another public notice because that, that meeting was still open. And you'd need to look in the paper.
Yes.
We don't have that to state, because we're local, we're local government.
The town website has it, right?
I just wanted to commend you for sitting so patiently and listening to so many people. I like the idea personally of tabling it with open public opinion, because what you see here tonight, you've heard many times that many people did not know about this until a few days ago. And that you have learned a lot, I think, about a lot of different things, and possible questions have been raised. And I think the brainstorming with the larger community, I think as people learn more about this, hopefully the media will get involved in putting this out to the community to give you a broader perspective, and perhaps other issues, other great questions, other considerations will be raised. And only the best decision can be, only the best representation of, of the North Country, of the town of Plattsburgh can be considered when you hear more of the residents.
You have to remember that our scope of interest is, and ability is limited. We're not, we're not going to be addressing...
I understand that.
Moral questions.
You may get a lot more of that, but you also may get more questions, more things that make sense to think about. The whole lighting of the airport, I had never thought about that, but that's legitimate. And are they going to be using our airport to, to move detention people in and out? There's a lot of kinds of other kinds of questions that brainstorming might find out and figure out for you to think about.
And you did hear that the lighting has been considered, right?
Yeah.
No, I haven't.
Yes, the lighting is, that was on the screen there. Absolutely.
I'd like to offer a comment, it's really not about this, this project per se, but as for all of you, for 16 years, I attended every single town board meeting in the town of Plattsburgh. And in those 16 years, I was the only person in the town of Plattsburgh at those meetings other than the town board. I would encourage every single one of you to get involved, go to town meetings, come to planning meetings, go to zoning board meetings, find out how the government works, and get involved in shaping it the way you want it to.
Really, I, I think you were there one time when I came and handed out flag pins.
I think so. Came in by accident.
I just happened to have the flag pins.
Quick question. When does open commentary end? You're saying that in the...
We won't have an end until a decision, essentially.
Basically, the next time they reconvene on this item is that, public hearing would still be open. They've, likely, what they've done in the past, it could be done slightly differently than this, but what they would do is continue it and then close it at that meeting.
Something for us to look forward to.
Yes, well, Mr. Gibbs, time for more.
All right.
Are you, are you able to require that the owner actually come here? Can you, is that something you guys can mandate and make them come and answer the questions?
No, we, we can ask, the board can ask questions and ask for information. It's up to the project, the project representative, how they get the board there.
It's on their onus.
They take it, I think it's, I think, knowing Mr. Gibbs the way I do, and how professional he is, I think he's going to make it very clear to his client that the client should be here. If nothing else, it would take him to him. The board can't do something like mandate that the client be here, otherwise it's never voted for. I think that's kind of right. They can ask for information, hopefully get it one way or the other.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. I resent that, I resent that.
Public hearing is still open until the next time we're here.
I have a motion.
Quiet, please. Wait, we have work to do.
Have you made your motion?
No. That is what we're doing right now.
Yes, your dear Ms. Wilsons.
Jim has moved that we tabled this.
If you're here for this item, please remain enlisted, the action did not end.
It was just the public hearing. Do I have a second?
So there's the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
People heard the gavel, and I think there was a belief that this meeting's over.
The whole meeting was over.
And, and, we are not adjourning the public hearing.
Right, correct.
It'll remain open until this item returns. Practice gavel. Practice gavel.
I think that's the first time, this is the first meeting I've actually used a gavel.
There's a lot of intensity.
I'm learning.
So, to correct it, so everyone hears this, there was no action taken, that was just a gavel being hit against some wood. So, where we're at right now is considering a motion, we're still not done the questions, but I believe Mr. Sherman was beginning to put something forward.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion Chair to table this item until we get the answers from the client or applicant.
And before, okay, and before there's a second...
Any discussion?
We need to discuss the items that are of interest. Second then? Okay, I'm not a Robert Schulze order.
Yeah, okay, so I have a second.
Okay, I will absolutely second.
So we have a second.
Is there a second?
Now discussion about why it's being motions to be tabled.
What do you want to know specifically?
Okay, we want to know about the surveillance.
Surveillance, I think we...
By surveillance, you mean if there's going to be any sort of audio and/or video recording inside the facility, or outside. And if that's going to go 24/7, or if it's going to be motion sensitive, you want to know the nature of it. Require you guys to be right now, the better list they're going to have for the applicant.
Trevor, can you just read off the questions you've written off? These are the ones we've listed, Jess, please help me if I missed something. Will there be 24-hour surveillance inside and out? What is this facility? How would it be more thoroughly described? Who is operating the facility specifically? What government agency? Hours of operation, times of shift changes, potential operational noise on site, some other questions?
Traffic.
Traffic having to do with shift change and the number of employees. How many vehicles total on site? And, and Mr. Gibbs will have these recorded as well. How has this, how has these projects, similar projects built elsewhere impacted the decent community or property values? Does this project already have other phases planned for expansion that they know about? What is the inspection schedule? I believe this was specific to the interior operations of the site, having to do with compliance with their own regulations for detention and operations on site. And will there be healthcare offered on site for those individuals being detained? Some of that falls outside of the town, but those were the questions that we captured specifically. What we didn't collect are the ones that were opinion about whether or not it looked forward, but those were more operational in nature. Was there anything else?
I, I had asked initially about how many people were potentially going to be detained there? Yeah, like, that there could be...
What is the maximum number of detainees?
What you may want to consider, is there public access allowed? If someone's being detained, can friends or family come visit? If so, how many at a time, parking, potential handicap access? If, you know, if there's public access to the building other than employees and a potential detainee, I think that changes a little bit about what the, the plan's going to be, the scope and those sorts of things. So, they want to know that also.
Didn't someone mention ages and sex? Sex is the nature of the detainees.
Demographics of detainees as in age and sex.
Okay, so those are, those will be appended to the motion.
Yes, so that's the, the list of items that the planning board has questions about that the applicant's representative was unable to answer at this meeting. Unless, Mr. Gibbs, you want to give all those answers?
I would suggest that the motion be to table this until those answers are received by planning staff, and planning staff can say to the board, we've got now a complete, completed application, and then we can notice it for another meeting. So it could be 30 days, 60 days into next year, it's going to depend on the applicant at this point to give the information back to the board.
I think the board agrees with that.
So if there's agreement on the items that are outstanding, requested to be answered by the applicant, then... by the applicant, then the board could entertain its motion.
Okay, so are there any further questions or comments for the board? No. All right, so take it away.
Terry Senical.
So to table it, yes.
Debbie Blake.
Yes.
James Sherman.
Yes.
Sarah K.
Yes.
Tim Palmer.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. There's some solace.